The last paragraph of the decision states specifically, "The case is remanded to the Planning Commission to address the impacts on the public shoreline with regard to repairing or replacing Outfall 001." So this is the topic, this is the subject matter for this agenda item. We are to address the impacts on the public shoreline, if any, with regard to the repairing or replacing of Outfall 101. And at this time, I'd like the applicant to come forward. Please, for those who haven't been sworn in before, raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter before the commission today?
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name as and proceed.
Good morning, Chair Clarkson, commissioners, commission staff. My name is Warren Lee, and I am the recently appointed president of Hu'ho'ua Bioenergy LLC. Hu'ho'ua Bioenergy LLC is being built to produce firm renewable baseload energy designed to replace Hoka's all-fired plants in an effort to meet the state's requirement to be 100% renewable by the year 2045. The project is currently undergoing construction with efforts to become operational by the end of this year, 2018. We've already spent over $120 million to date following the Windward Planning Commission's approval of SMA permit 221 back in 2011. We are here before you today, as you mentioned, to be, to address the remand from the Intermediate Court of Appeals. After various and numerous proceedings that are described in my February 27, 2018 letter to the commission, on one, on January 22, 2018, the Intermediate Court of Appeals issued a memorandum opinion regarding SMA permit 221, remanding the case to the Windward Planning Commission, as you described, Chair Clarkson, that to address the impacts on the public shoreline with regard to the repairing or replacing of Outfall 001. In the opinion, the ICA also affirmed the Third Circuit Court's March 10, 2014 final judgment in favor of the Windward Planning Commission and Hu'ho'ua, except with respect to the application of the public trust doctrine to the shoreline. Specifically, the case is remanded to the Planning Commission to address the impacts on the public shoreline with, again, with in regard to repairing or replacing Outfall 001. So this is a single issue on remand, as stated. With respect and wish to comply with the ICA's opinion, we are here to confirm that Hu'ho'ua will not be repairing or replacing Outfall 001. Instead, Hu'ho'ua will be using underground injection control wells in order to discharge water from plant operations and supply well testing. Also, we will be using onsite disposal, i.e. dry wells, for development-generated stormwater These alternatives are discussed in more detail in our February 27 letter and Attachment A. We believe there will be no impact to the public shoreline. With respect to the permits and other potential impacts regarding the UIC wells and onsite disposal, we believe SMA permit 221, Condition Number Four, as well as other provisions, already addresses this by requiring that the operation of the biomass facility shall comply with all applicable county, state, and federal requirements related to water quality and discharge. Of course, we will continue to work with other agencies such as the Department of Health to ensure that we are complying with all laws relating to water quality and discharge. I would also like to note that Condition Six already provides that, quote, "All developmental, all development-generated runoff shall be disposed of on-site," close quotes. In addition, the Planning Department, in its letter dated December 27, 2017, confirmed that the UIC wells are covered under SMA permit 221 as an alternative to using Outfall Per the ICA opinion, we respectfully ask the Windward Planning Commission, quote, "Address the impacts on the public shoreline," close quotes, by issuing a second supplemental decision and order in the form of Attachment B to our February 27 letter. As I mentioned before, I recently joined Hu'ho'ua, but we have a project team here who may, who will be able to assist in any questions that the Windward Planning Commission may have. Mahalo for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Does your group have any further statement to make at this time?
Chairman Clarkson, that is our statement at this time.
That is your statement. Are there any questions from the commission? I have a question. So you would not object to an additional finding of fact and an additional condition that would indicate that you will not be repairing or replacing the outfall and, as a finding of fact, and a condition that you shall not repair or replace the outfall? You would agree with that kind of...
This is Will Yamamoto, counsel for Hu'ho'ua. Yes, we would agree to that. I believe the specific language that we're proposing is in the draft second supplemental decision and order attached to our February 27 letter.
Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated, and we can start with the public testimony. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter before the Planning Commission today?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Okay. We'll start with Kuhon. The item on the agenda is what the impact of the repair or replacement of Outfall 001 will be, and apparently there will be no repair or replacement. So I don't know what you're going to talk about, but please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Kuhon Pak. Okay, the Public Utilities Commission, and this may sound like I'm off-topic, but I bring it back. The Public Utilities Commission approved Hu'ho'ua Ola, which is its new name, I'm the only one who uses it, after taking the company's word at face value that it had a plan for disposing the continual stream of ash waste that it would produce. The company assured them that the ash would be trucked to the West Hawaii landfill. The company has no standing to make such a statement because no application has been made, no permit has been issued for this, and it would be a months-long process. So where's all this ash going to go? You're the Planning Commission, I'd like to know. But the reason I bring this up is because now Hu'ho'ua Ola is telling us that the stormwater drainage will have no negative impact on public shoreline, so therefore they don't need to do any repair, any replacement, just leave it as is. So are we to take the company's word again at face value that they've spoken after they've disproven their credibility? The stormwater will be coming off their 17-acre property, coming into direct contact with ash, debris, wood, chemicals, and other parts of this biomass facility before draining onto public land and shoreline. A portion of Hu'ho'ua Ola's outfall is on public land. There should be no question that this should trigger an environmental assessment, or an EA, for those who don't know that term. Even the administrator of DLNR has confirmed in a letter dated April 4, quite recently, 2018, that Hu'ho'ua Ola must comply with Chapter 343 of the Hawaii Revised Statutes and do an environmental assessment. Yet Hu'ho'ua Ola President Warren Lee stated to Commissioner Clarkson of the Windward Planning Commission in a letter dated February 27, 2018, and just read recently, this morning, that the drainage will have no negative impact on the public shoreline. He makes his argument simply by citing a long list of state and county requirements in that letter. But just because he lists the laws doesn't mean he is following the law. Take, for example, Condition Five of the SMA permit 221, that the Planning Commission has already issued to Hu'ho'ua. The condition requires them to follow DOH limits to noise. They have no intention of following this law, which is why they're here today for Item Number Four, to seek an exemption to the noise ordinance. You have, anyway, let me skip down because I've mixed my testimonies with the next item on the, on the issue. Well, Hu'ho'ua's policy seems to be act now and apologize later. This is not acceptable. You cannot bring coral back after it's been bleached. You cannot decontaminate an aquifer that's pristine. You cannot dispose of a mountain of ash with a snap of the fingers, no matter how many times you apologize, no matter how many exemptions you seek and are granted. Our environmental assessment law was crafted as a tool to identify impacts beforehand and provide mitigative relief. I humbly request that you protect our interests in Hawaii, not the interests of the San Francisco owner of Hu'ho'ua Ola, and please implement our environmental law that we worked so hard for in the state of Hawaii. Mahalo.
Can we please hold applause to the end? Thank you.
Aloha, Chair and Planning Commission. My name is Max Newberg. I'm the field representative for the Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters. As our membership here on Hawaii Island is close to 600, some of which are here on my right today, we appreciate the opportunity to testify today in support of Hu'ho'ua and their plan for the stormwater runoff. It is my understanding that their plan will eliminate the discharge of plant operation water into the ocean, and it is also my understanding that Hu'ho'ua will handle water discharge from plant operations as well as pre-development and post-development, which is consistent with the permit 221. As such, we respectfully request that the commission issue a supplemental decision in order for Hu'ho'ua to continue. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Dean. I too am in the construction industry, and I really do appreciate the union and everything they've done for this country, and I'm grateful for them. And I want to assure them, there are many, many jobs waiting to happen in the solar industry and with, with infrastructure jobs for storage and things like this. Now, to address the water, water is, you know, it's, it's a fluid thing, that you're going to have a continual stream of water going into this facility. Now, it's potable, clean water as it enters. Then it becomes subjected to various industrial activities, which renders it non-potable. At this point, there's no possible solution except for a continual amount of storage or some sort of massive filtration system that purifies the water, which would be energy intensive, or injecting that into the, into the ground. Well, any water that's going to be stored on the ground or injected into the, into the ground, that's going in the ocean. There's just no doubt about that. And it also will contaminate the aquifer. The basalt structure of this island is just permeated with cracks. It's very porous, many areas are very porous, but it's just fractured and fissures and fault lines everywhere. There's just no conceivable way that you're going, if water that's contaminated enters the ground in any way, there's just no way that it's not going into the ocean or it's not going into the aquifer. It's going in one of those two places. Otherwise, it would just continue to pile up on the property. Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Lisa Andrews. I'm representing myself, my ohana, the environment, and all future generations. The damage to the project Hu'ho'ua Ola will inflict on the shore and ocean will be irreversible. Piles of contaminated ash or remnant of coal ash will end up in runoff and affecting everything Makai of property. The 100 feet from shoreline, three injection wells would be ridiculously close to ocean. The irreparable damage to the aquifer and ocean is a horrifying thought. Chemical-laden wastewater should not be inflicted upon the public through their water, through drinking water. This same water will kill the ecosystems off and will surely affect up and down the coast with the tides, currents, and wind. 33 million gallons of toxic water a day can't be ignored. Yes to environmental assessment. And I guess the construction people that came here didn't get the memo that there isn't going to be any construction. So we're really speaking for nothing, and we can come back and do this again when they decide that they are going to build some sort of repair on, I forget the code for that project.
Outfall 001.
Outfall 001. So I hope that they don't lose their jobs because the project's not going to happen, but at the same time I do, because I'd rather they work in another industry. Regarding the other 221, regarding noise, an unlimited construction noise is a terrible idea. As we know, the current decibels agreement is continually being violated and takes place...
Sorry, ma'am, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
We're only on number three right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can come back up for that one. Yeah.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Gino Gus. I know that you're trying to limit the testimony specifically to the issue of the Outfall 001 matter. And regarding this particular matter, even though they don't intend to repair that outfall, we find it an opportunity to really beg you and implore you to think about what's behind our concern. Our concern is, is that the water that they plan to inject into our aquifer that my granddaughter's drink is going to be affected. The fact that they purport that the water will be safe after it's been affected by injection of wastewater does not give me any comfort. I hope that you will allow us, at every opportunity, to really register our concern about what's happening with this outfall. The effect that it will have on the shoreline is intrinsically wrapped up in what they're going to do with the wastewater. Whether the wastewater's going to go through that outfall and into the ocean, which I think was the original plan for the sugar mill, has completely changed, and I hope that you will really consider mitigating this and addressing our concerns. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. My name is Robert Smith, Pepekeo. My issue also is the water. There's been a lot of numbers thrown around how much, how many gallons a day this plant is going to superheat up, run through various metals at super-high speed, which means those metals become part of the water, and where that water ends up. It's got two places to go up there where the plant is if they're not going to use the outfall. It's going to be in the ocean, or it's going to be in our drinking water. Okay? This is superheated water in itself contaminating the aquifer. And then the metals that it picks up, when you're moving millions of gallons a day, you are stripping the metal, okay, from the piping. So I just want you Commissioners to realize and to think about how important water is to our needs, and as Gino said, our children are going to be faced with it in the future. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Tras. I'm Matt Tras. I live in Pepekeo, about a mile from the power plant site. I also happen to be an environmental professional and a noise expert, as well as other areas of environmental law, one of which, the tenet behind almost every environmental law, as I'm sure you know, is that you examine both the indirect impacts as well as the direct impacts. Now, here we have somebody, a situation where you've been remanded to look at the impacts of something that the applicant is now saying is not going to happen. Well, if that's not going to happen, something else is, and you know what that is, it's the injections. So I would think that there would have to be an analysis of that injection because it is an indirect impact of the decision that you're about to make. So I would like to personally push for a deep analysis, especially looking at Clean Water Act, Section 316A and B, and to bring this information forward. And I want to point out to everybody here, I was an electrician for many years. I am pro-development for the simple reason that if people don't build things, I don't work. But what I do with every project I work on is I push to make that project the best project it can be, for that project, for the protection of the developers from lawsuits, and for the next project, and the next project after that. If you want a good industry, you want good projects, you have to do it right from the beginning. And I'm afraid this project, because we're trying to ram something through that was under an old permit, is not the best way we could do it. And I understand the constraints of the developer. I understand the need for good jobs on this island, but for the long-term health of the industry, we need to do this right, and the way it's being done is not right.
Corey Harden for Sierra Club, Mokalua Group, on the impacts on the outfall. Just first, I want to thank you folks all for your volunteer service. And would you please try to get answers to some questions on this? Is it no action? Is that the correct response? Hu'ho'ua says they're not going to repair or replace, and they believe there will be no impact, so you folks don't need to do anything. Well, you can believe a lot of things, but of course, they have kind of a bias here. And if Hu'ho'ua is, are they replacing that fall with the injection wells? Would this be considered a replacement? Oh, they're also adding a new water and wastewater treatment building, and is that a replacement for the outfall? It seems like it will maybe, then the water's got to go someplace. Another question, is there a need for a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit, or an environmental assessment, or an environmental impact statement? Or at least doing dye and leachate tests, adding that as a condition to see where the water goes? I mean, they believe it's not going to cause any problem, but how about doing some testing? There's, you know, over 21 million gallons of water a day going to be going someplace, aquifer, the ocean, that's a lot of water. I've seen that there's going to be wastewater mixed with the cooling water and other water before it's injected. A new water and wastewater treatment building will be built. As you know, Sierra Club and others recently won a lawsuit against Maui County over injection wells that put in wastewater and it mixed with groundwater and eventually went to the ocean, and that was not a good thing and not legal. Will there be any impacts from water still going into the existing outfall structures? I mean, some of the structures are still there, and with the flume broken off, is water going to be eroding the face of the poli? So, thank you.
Claudia Rohr. Good morning, again. Condition 13 of SMA 221, 2011 version. The applicant shall comply with all applicable county, state, and federal laws, rules, regulations, and requirements. It doesn't matter that they're not repairing or replacing the outfall, they're using it. I have submitted the letter from the DLNR, which states that if they're using it for stormwater, they must get an easement over state land, and it triggers an EA. Right now, I think you have enough information to know that you can't proceed any further. An EA must be done before you make any further decisions. That's the law. It must be done before the decision-making. You have, they've known it from the beginning because it's on their alta policy, that it was an encroachment. Then in 2011, they did a shoreline survey and tried to get it certified, and the state surveyor wrote them a letter stating that there were encroachments that they had to resolve. The Planning Department needs to make them complete a shoreline survey and take care of the encroachment issues, which would be to apply for an easement over state land and purchase it from the state. Right now, the decision about whether it has to be repaired or not, it's obviously eroding the face of the poli. I've sent in photographs to the Planning Department that I took maybe two months ago showing that it has shifted and there has been erosion, and basically, they were cited last summer for violating their NPDS permit for construction activities, stormwater associated with construction activities. They found sediment in the old outfall pipe. They found that the old mill foundation wasn't sloped correctly to, and it wasn't properly constructed to take out the sediment from the stormwater. I've sent all this in, maybe 100 emails, I've done all the research for you, but this takes the cake, a letter that says an EA has been triggered. So therefore, no more decision-making. An EA comes first. Thank you.
My name is David Ordenstein, and I'm a resident of Pepekeo. I reside on a very unique property, and I just wanted to make sure that I share my manao, what I observe on this property, to you. What makes this property very unique is the property goes directly down to the ocean. I can walk and put my feet in the water. I'm not on a cliff. I'm in an area that used to be part of the camp, where houses were actually destroyed and just buried under the, the land. Because I live on the ocean, I'm able to observe the water seeping through this land and coming to our ocean where, and, and it's full of oil, it's full of all kinds of things that was buried in the ground from the camp. There's a lot of underground water out there, and it comes down, and I observe it every day. I work very hard on the property, and I know the underground water, how it comes out, how it just seeps out of that place. And I'm across the street from the plant. I don't even, I pick, I love opieh, I eat opieh, and I don't even pick from that side because I know the stream comes down, the underground water comes down. I go to the bay side, which limits when I can pick because it's so rough out there. Today would have been a perfect day, like yesterday. But I... But I fish, olioli, kumu, and all these things, I fear that it will be taken away from us Hawaiians, us people that use the ocean, eat from the ocean. And I just feel like there's no one protecting us from the government side. I feel like, you know, like jobs, you know, jobs is more important and stuff like that. But, you know, I'm from Oahu. I saw how so many things were given and how the, just the place just turned. That's why I'm on this, I didn't know. And yet, I see the same things, planning commissions, yeah, give away, give away, give, give, give. And pretty soon, not gonna have nothing to give. I know it's easy to just sit there and follow rules and really, but I just wanted to share my manao with you. I see underground water every day coming out from under the ground, and it affects where I fish, where I take food to eat. I can feel it, I know. I don't know all the chemicals or whatever, but I know. So that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Johnson, and I live in Pepekeo, between the power plant and the ocean. Rather rare thing for you today. But David is my neighbor. And the stuff that was buried in the ground and the garbage that runs out into the bay is amazing, the pollution, the stuff that's growing from this pollution that was buried, which isn't anything compared to, I imagine, what this power plant could put out. There was 10 houses there that used to be there for the plantation workers, and I guess they just bulldozed them all in. And there are some motors that sit down and rust in the little bay and stuff, but the water's disgusting down there. It is absolutely disgusting, from just a little thing that only happened for a short period of time. The water, you could go down there and look in my bay, it's beautiful, it's a beautiful bay, but yet, it's filled with orange-growing green garbage from what flows out. And in the same thing, if you wanna pump, I was a contractor all my life, you wanna pump all that water to run that plant? Well, there's something else that's to go back in there, and all that garbage and pollution is gonna find it way back in that way, and it's gonna affect the whole community. Do you want, would you want your water to come out of 22 million gallons, or five gallons, or whatever? I wouldn't wanna drink out of a bucket of five gallons that had pollution in it. You know, it's disgusting what they're just wanting to do. I mean, this is our soil, and this is our water, and this is our ground. And I watch it go on every day at my house, and I don't want it to keep going on like this. And it's gonna be a lot bigger than the few rusty motors that are there and a few old decaying houses. Because there's not that much bad chemicals in a decaying house that was built back in 1900, they built it with concrete and wood. But the chemicals today that they're gonna use to run this plant, you know, it's amazing. I mean, I'll testify to the second part, too, about the noise and stuff. But you can't just pump that much water in the ground and have it not affect everybody in the community. I don't think any of you would wanna drink that water or be a part of that. But I firsthand, I'm downhill between, and all the garbage that they're gonna produce is gonna run right through my land. Why do I have to put up with that? That's not fair to me. When I bought that land, I didn't know they were gonna let all their trash run through my property. You know, my trash doesn't run through theirs. I bet you even if I went up there with one trash can and dumped it outside their gate, they'd be mad at me. You know, think about it. They wanna dump it all in my yard, through my soil, through my three acres. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Rosemary Gonzalez. I was an original intervenor. Basically, all I can relay at this point, being specific to the outfall, they're stating that they're not gonna fix it, but they're still going to use it. For wastewater discharge. There's 17 acres, plus everything that comes down, the road itself, that funnels into where the power plant is. I'm just asking to consider that they're not saying they're going to repair it, but it's still going to be used.
Well, it's an interesting comment. So the, you're saying that this will be used for the plant operation, the outfall?
The, part of the drainage. Sorry, I'm not an expert on the drainage. I wasn't gonna speak on this issue, but since you kept asking about intervenor, I thought I'd present. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'd like to call Mr. Lee up. You heard the last testifier. Would you like to comment on that?
The, what we have, what was there in 2011 with the outfall, is the sediment basin, and also there was a flume that went out into the ocean, maybe about 40, 50, 450 yards, and it went on piers, and it went out. So during the contested case on this SMA, the flume fell down due to some storm damage, I presume. The question was asked at the contested case, what is Houhunu'a gonna do with the outfall? Repair it or replace it? And the response at that time was, well, we need to look at, we need to engineer it and evaluate the situation. So I think that is what, because the record was, it was stated in that manner, the issue was remanded back to the Wind River Planning Commission. So, based on my experience and recollection prior to being with Houhunu'a, that flume was used, basically, that outfall system was used to discard plant, power plant, and sugar plant refinery wastewater. So you would have the wastewater from the cane washing going down the flume, you would have perhaps bagasse going into that area. From the, when it rains, the runoff would go to that outfall and to any other outfalls or go over the cliff. So our response, and what we're saying is that we're not gonna repair it or replace it, is that for the industrial wastewater, such as that going through the condenser under the turbine to pull, to pull vacuum on the turbine, that is gonna be pumped from the supply wells, goes through the hot well under the turbine, what we call non-contact water, then reinserted through injection wells. The reference to wastewater treatment is that from the supply wells, we will be doing what they call demineralizing, or taking out the hard minerals from the water and using pure water to put back into the boiler. And then that waste stream is combined to go back into the injection wells. And that is gonna be something like brackish water. So that is, the comment is that, if I understand what the last testifier mentioned was that we're not gonna fix the outfall, yes, that is not the plan. But we're still gonna use it? Yes, we're still gonna use it. So when I, so when I-
Excuse me, please, please.
So when I say we're gonna use it, we're talking about what I mentioned earlier, that's an onsite disposal for development-generated water. In other words, that's rainwater. So based on the plant being built, if there is a hardened surface or a bigger, larger roof being built, you have less permeable area on the ground. So that additional generated runoff from stormwater, rainwater, will be taken care of onsite. So there will be no incremental increase in any rainwater being disposed through that outfall. That's, that's the plan.
You know, I heard the commentary from behind us when Mr. Lee said that we are gonna be using that outfall, but we should clarify what that use is.
Yes, we should.
And it is important, because, because originally, the plan was, so this was back in 2010, 2011, when this commission made its original decision, the plan was to use the outfall for the specific purpose of discharging water, plant water, or water that was generated from plant operations. In other words, boiler water, any wastewater that might have occurred as a result of running the plant. And, you know, of course, it would be treated, and then it would go out of the outfall. That was the original plan. And then in 2010, with, you know, we were surprised when that outfall had collapsed. So then the question was at the time, during the course of this contested case hearing, what are we gonna do with that? There were some alternatives proposed at the time during the hearing, including the use of injection wells. And ultimately, a decision had not been engineered and made yet because it was during the course of a contested case hearing. So, subsequent to that, Houhunu'a listened to concerns of the public and decided ultimately that it would be better not to use the outfall to discharge water that came from plant operations. Instead, it would redirect that into injection wells. And of course, that's why we're, our position today is that we are not repairing or replacing Outfall 001. We have changed plans, essentially, as we, as we noted as an alternative plan during the original contested case hearing. And that's what's here before us today. The ICA in this matter found that the record wasn't as complete as it liked, and so it's asking the commission today to address this situation and clarify whether, what we're gonna do with respect to Outfall 001, and that's our answer. Now, with respect to, with respect to the comment that, you know, DLNR has determined that if we are using this outfall, then we need to potentially get an easement or get an EA, or do an EA, for example. With respect to that, first of all, there's some context that needs to be laid. The DLNR never once contacted us for information regarding this. This response was directly to Ms. Rohr, and it was in response to several letters and documentation that she provided to the DLNR. And quite frankly, we questioned the accuracy of a lot of that information. Some of the information is stale, some of the information was characterized in an inaccurate way. So we have not yet spoken to the DLNR regarding this letter, prior to the issuance of this letter. Be it as it may, we will be talking with the DLNR going forward on this matter. We don't believe this results in any change to our position. It does not affect the ICA remand issue, which is specifically as to the impact, not the use now, it's only as to the impact to the shoreline. The use issue is a separate and distinct issue that we can deal with, with the DLNR. They are the appropriate agency to deal with this issue, and we will be talking with the DLNR regarding that issue. There are a lot of questions as to whether that even applies to us, given that the outfall was constructed on or about 1948, which predates 1970, which is typically the trigger date for, you know, getting permit approvals before you do any kind of putting in of a new structure, for example. There are issues as to whether, you know, this quote-unquote "use" is referring to development-generated use, in other words, extra water that's being made as a result of us putting in this new development here versus natural rainwater that would continue to flow anyway off the shore, off the polly, if there was no development. So what we're here today to talk about is the development-generated water, the water that Houhunu'a is creating as a result of its project. Thank you.
So there will be no water from the operations of the plant that will be going through the outfalls, there's our one. It's the only water that'll be there, that I understand, the only water that'll be going through that would be whatever that is shedding off the roof and all that.
That is correct, and only in the volume and quantities that existed before our new development. So in other words, any development-generated stormwater is gonna go into onsite disposal by the use of drywells. And we're, I believe we already obtained approval from the Department of Public Works, which is the appropriate agency that issues the permits for that. With respect to pre-development water, natural rainwater that continues to flow off the polly, whether it's at Outfall 1 or 100 yards down the, down the cliff, all that water is natural rainwater that's flowing off the polly.
If there are no further questions at this time, we'll thank the testifiers, all of you, and I'll ask for a motion that public testimony be closed.
Can I ask one more question of one of the, not this group, but the first group? I think it was David, David? You said you saw oil and stuff seeping through the ground, seeping out through the water into the ocean.
I deal with that daily.
Is it coming from this plant or coming from the?
It's coming from underground.
It's from underground.
And I, I believe it comes from the shortsightedness of who left that property. They buried, they broke everything down and buried it, and they left it. Okay, there's a sugar plantation there before, and the area where I'm at was where there was about 10 or 12 homes. And they just, they just busted it down and buried it. And there was engines, there was cars, there was all kinds of stuff that they just, or equipment, probably not cars, but equipment and everything, just they buried it. And it comes out, it leaches out, I mean, there's a place where I wanna work on right now, I cannot, because the underground water just keeps on coming, because we've had all this rain. And it comes out orange, comes out oily. It comes right into the ocean, because where I am at, there's a stream. And that stream is dry, but underground, it comes out. It just, the top is fine, it looks all good, but the bottom, it just keeps on coming, leaching out. And opieh on that side, not too much, so I'm gonna grab on the other side, get plenty. But they stay away from all that stuff that's coming. And it's just, I see it. I don't, you know, you can go make all the stuff, all that kind of reports or all the reviews you want, but I see it every day. I live with it. I don't know if it's from them, but I know it's coming from underground, and if you don't put something on the ground, I wonder, in my mind, is the same thing gonna be happening? Is it gonna affect the whole coast, the coastline? Is it gonna affect other people like me that use the ocean? And I've just seen it so much from where I'm from. I grew up on Kailua Beach in Oahu, they had a wastewater treatment plant. They wanted to dump it off of Kailua Bay, but they built a pipe that went way far out. Well, you know what? They said, everybody, all the reports, everybody said, hey, it would be okay, no worry, Kailua residents, it would be fine. Kailua Bay hasn't been the same since. It totally changed the bay, totally changed the way the water looked, the way the water smelled. I've just seen it. All these kind of reports and everything, it'd be fine, 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 yeah, 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 right. My personal experience, it just hasn't been good. My personal experience at Pepekeo Point, where I'm at, is just, a lot of stuff comes from under the ground, and it leaches into that ocean. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Further questions from any commissioner for any testifier?
I would like to hear what Ms. Rohr has to say.
Well, do you have a question for her?
So in regards to the cliff that you used to walk down, has that changed?
Yes. After fighting really hard to get parking for four cars, it's been filled with construction stuff. It's been really hard to access the cliff. Finally, they put a gate in, but still, it, it's, it's a great walk south of the plant, very scenic, very good for photography, good for fishing. scenic, very good for photography, good for fishing. What I'm concerned with is the stormwater issue. They act like it's rainwater. No, it's not. Under, under their industry code, it's regulated under the Clean Water Act. It requires an NPDS permit. It's an industrial facility. Stormwater is not just rainwater. And it, don't let them fool you. The other thing they're not admitting to is this wastewater that they're injecting into the aquifer was never even discharged into the ocean before. It went into settling ponds, and they, and it was never handled this way. It never went into the ocean directly. It never went into the aquifer. In fact, the EPA was very concerned that they, they did a fate analysis to ensure that it wouldn't go into the aquifer. I don't think you have an understanding of, the people who want to recreate there have now fear for their health. So when I do hike along the cliff, I enjoy it, but I'm always concerned about walking through leachate from the ash pile that's still there. There's a 20-acre parcel with the ash from the former facility illegally stockpiled on agricultural land. And again, if you read over the conditions of the permit and the representations, findings of fact, they were supposed to recycle that ash. It wasn't supposed to be landfilled at the Kona landfill. This is ridiculous. They're changing everything. Anyway, I still enjoy it. I'm taking photos, and I will be afraid to eat the fish. That's all.
Be that as it may, I was thinking that you might consider the public open space access commission as a way to retain that.
Well, I have been fighting for this.
If you can get over the fear.
Well, no, I've been fighting, I take photos, I complain. They finally put in a gate that I can get through. For a long time, they just had it locked, and you had to walk around on a mud pile. Now they finally put in a decent gate to get to the shoreline. But the four parking spaces have been filled with construction machinery and stuff. And I've waited months for them to deal with this, and it's not on their final plan. They haven't marked out this, they've conveyed it to the county, but they haven't put it on their final plan. They don't own that. They bought it with that on there. It's, anyway, I'm a little upset that nobody's put the parking for four cars that's been conveyed to the county on the final plan. Anyway.
Are there any more questions for Ms. Rohr? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter before the planning commission?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and where you live, and proceed.
I'm Gilbert Dimoto, born and raised at Pepekeo. A lot of the people are complaining, complaining about the noise, about everything else. And all the guys who used to live near the mill actually comes from where they come from. And they never did complain about the noise, because the mill never used to make the noise. And today, if the noise is making, because-
Sorry, sir, we're talking about the outfall right now. If you wanna testify about the noise, then that's the next one.
The water comes from above. We drink the water. I born and raised there. I'm 96 years old, and I still feel young yet. You know why? Nothing helped us now, because they all complained, complained about the water, everything else. The water, they used to throw the plantation, I used to be a welder, I used to work in the garage. Then off-season, I used to be down the mill. Okay? The fishermen used to be very happy. They claim they cannot eat the fish now. The fish used to be, all that wastewater used to go in the ocean, the fishermen used to be happy. Now they complaining the water is coming towards Kukaa side. The water goes Hamakua size. The fishermen used to be very happy, used to catch a lot of fish. Because one of the guy who used to go fish is to live right next to us, he should always bring the fish to my house too. Because in the old days, you always exchange everything. You're hunting, you make smoked meat, you give to the neighbor. Your neighbor go fishing, give you fish. We're all happy. Today, they're only complaining, complaining. There was one, I remember coming to the meeting, she, okay, come to the meeting, she claims she lived near the mill. The smokestack is getting her sick. Where she lives, Kapakua. So they asked me, why you know it's Kapakua? Since I used to be the welder, then afterwards, I applied for outside field welder. I used to go do repairs. Kapakua is two miles away, and they claim right, they live near the mill. I used to leave only maybe about from here to across the street from the mill. There was no noise at all. The mill was quiet. The only time we used to complain was when they burn cane near the home, and you're just happy your parents wash clothes, hang them up, the clothes get all black again, you take them off, you have to wash them again. It's only complaint here. We all was very happy. But now all the new people that moved to Pepekeo, they're always complaining about everything else. But nothing is true in it. And plenty of them, they say, they say honest, but that honest is only mouth.
And ask Mr. Dimoto something.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this testifier?
Mr. Dimoto, explain to the gentleman there that Pepekeo was a big community with two stores and a restaurant, or, you know, like a small cafe.
We had, the plantation store was above, way above the highway. You know, the highway, when you just stood down, used to be the plantation store.
Remember, you used to have Nikova store?
And then Nikova store and Hibata store, the two small stores. And that time, you can buy something, you know how cheap it was.
Yeah, because I'm familiar with the area, so, you know, when I hear these things, I don't make people realize how big a community it was.
Yeah. And so I, you know, I grown up all there, and I raised four kids in Pepekeo, and everybody's healthy so far.
Okay, thank you very much. At some point, additional finding of fact and conditions will have to be attached to the SMA permit 221. I've been informed that we don't have to have the full text of that written out unless we want to adopt that that was supplied by the Huhunua folks. I personally would prefer to write our own in a much simpler manner, relating only to the outfall issue that was remanded to us by the intermediate court of appeals.
I've heard some evidence today referred to in testimony with both the petition and the remand that wasn't included in your packet for this item, it was included in your other packet. So I'd just like you to add that that will be, basically, all evidence referred to during the consideration of Ms. Rohr's petition and the remand will be entered into the record for this agenda item.
Okay. Hey Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session to consult with our attorney at this time.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to, going to executive-